Could you bow your heads, please? Father, we're here today and we're humbled that we are able to assemble freely to do this. We ask you, Lord, for your wisdom. We're going to need it. We ask for unity and we ask for civility. And Father, we pray that we would be good representatives to the people who've sent us here and that when they look at us, they see that. Lord, you know, the hearts of folks, we've struggled with COVID, we've struggled with so many things, and our people in this state are scared, they're concerned, Lord, and they're looking to us for answers. So we ask for wisdom from you. And now, Father, all of these things we ask in the name of Jesus, and everybody said, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
There we go. Clerk has the letter of resignation.
Dear Mr. Speaker, serving as a member of the House of Delegates is the pinnacle of my professional career. However, I have been presented with the opportunity to make an impact in the arena of child welfare in West Virginia. You and I both know how important that subject is, and I want to do everything I can to make an impact. Therefore, it is with a heavy heart that I must resign as a member of the West Virginia House of Delegates effective midnight, August 1st, 2021. I would like to thank my colleagues for making this such a rewarding experience. I wish to especially thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the amazing opportunity to serve as a member of your leadership team. Finally, I must thank the folks of Monroe, Raleigh, and Summers Counties for allowing me to represent them in this chamber. Respectfully, Jeffrey Pack.
The letter of resignation will be filed with the clerk's office. The clerk has the letter of appointment.
Dear Secretary Warner, pursuant to West Virginia Code, Chapter 3, Article 10, Section 5, I have this day appointed Jordan Mayner Beaver, Raleigh County, as a delegate representing the 28th District of the House of Delegates to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of the Honorable Jeffrey Pack. Sincerely, Jim Justice, Governor. Delegate Mayner took the oath of office on August 24th, 2021.
If our new colleague, Delegate Mayner, would please stand. The House would please make our new colleague welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I suggest the absence of a quorum.
Lady from the 49th suggests the absence of a quorum. All members will register your attendance by voting either yes or no. Clerk will prepare the machine. Has every member registered his or her presence? If so, the clerk will close the machine. There are 97 members present, three members absent. Chair declares the quorum to be present. Lady from the 49th.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the speaker be authorized to appoint a committee of three to notify the Senate that the House of Delegates has assembled an extraordinary session and is ready to enter upon the business stated in the proclamation by which it has been called together.
Lady from the 49th moves that the speaker be authorized to appoint a committee of three to notify the Senate that the House has assembled an extraordinary session and is ready to enter upon the business stated in the proclamation. Those in favor of that motion will please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The highest habit, the chair declares that motion adopted. On this committee, the chair appoints the lady from the 38th, Delegate Graves, the gentleman of the 27th, Delegate Gerhart, and the gentleman of the 34th, Delegate Boggs. Lady from the 49th.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that the speaker be authorized to appoint a committee of three to join with a similar committee on the part of the Senate to inform His Excellency, the Governor, that the legislature has assembled an extraordinary session and is ready to proceed to the business stated in the proclamation.
Lady from the 49th moves that the speaker be authorized to appoint a committee of three to join with a similar committee of the Senate to inform His Excellency, the Governor, that the legislature has assembled an extraordinary session and is ready to enter upon the business stated in the proclamation. Those in favor of that motion will please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The highest habit, the chair declares that motion adopted. On this committee, the chair appoints the lady from the 57th, Delegate Rowan, the gentleman of the 47th, Delegate Phillips, and the gentleman of the 17th, Delegate Lovejoy. Introductions, introduction of guests. Gentleman of the 13th, Delegate Higginbotham.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. In the North Gallery, you have my sister, Hallie. If Hallie, please stand. She is the strongest and bravest person I have ever met in my entire life, and that's because she is a survivor. And she is here to talk with members today about her story, about her testimony. This morning, we met with about 30 of you, maybe 35, and after we're done here today, we're going to continue having conversations. When she was 13 years old, she was in a relationship with an adult man. Couple of years later, she got pregnant, and because of our very conservative and traditional family, she was married to this adult man still as a minor, three weeks later. As with most cases of child marriages, they end in addiction, they end in abuse, and they end in divorce. Thankfully, she got out of that situation. But West Virginia is the only state in our region that does not have a minimum age requirement to get married. She is advocating for a minimum of 18 years old to get married in West Virginia. So I'd love for you all to meet with her, hear her story, consider our bill, and hopefully make it pass. But if the House would please make my sister, Hallie, feel welcome.
Reports to standing committees, reports of select committees, messages from the executive.
State of West Virginia Executive Department, Charleston, a proclamation by the Governor. I, Jim Justice, by virtue of the authority vested in the Governor by Section 7, Article 7 of the Constitution of West Virginia, do hereby call the West Virginia Legislature to convene an extraordinary session at 11:00 a.m. on Monday, October 11, 2021, in its chambers in the state Capitol, the city of Charleston, for the limited purpose of considering and acting upon only the following matters. First, legislation relating to and implementing the decennial redistricting of the House of Delegates and State Senate of the Legislative Department. Second, legislation relating to and implementing a decennial apportionment of representatives of the United States House of Representatives. Third, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to the Bureau of Senior Services, Bureau of Senior Services Fund 8724, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0508, by supplementing, amending, and adding a new item of appropriation, federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $16,400,000 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Fourth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, the Department of Health and Human Resources Division, Human Services, Energy Assistance Fund 8755, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0511, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $7,832,540 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Fifth, to expire funds to the unappropriate surplus balance in the state fund general revenue for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, in the amount of $2 million, from the Attorney General Consumer Protection Recovery Fund, Fund 1509, fiscal year 2022, Organization 1500, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Sixth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to Department of Agriculture Fund 8736, fiscal year 2022, Organization 1400, by supplementing, amending, and adding a new item of appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $1,098,839 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Seventh, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, Department of Arts, Culture and History Division of Culture and History Fund 8718, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0432, by supplementing, amending, and adding a new item appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $765,400 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Eighth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, the Department of Health and Human Resources Division of Health, Community and Mental Health Services, from 8794, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $267,969 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Ninth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to Department of Health and Human Resources Consolidated Medical Service Fund, Fund 8723, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for personal services and employee benefits, appropriation 00100, in the amount of $100,000 in the appropriation for current expenses, appropriation 13000, in the amount of $11 million for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Tenth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to Department of Health and Human Resources Division of Health Fund 8802, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for personal services and employee benefits, appropriation 00100, in the amount of $1,400,000, the appropriation for current expenses, appropriation 13000, in the amount of $33,556,737, and the appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $14,998,450 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Eleventh, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to Department of Health and Human Resources Division of Human Services Fund 8722, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0511, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for medical services, appropriation 18900, in the amount of $83,509,92 for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $340,984,855 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Twelve, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to Department of Health and Human Resources Division of Health, Substance Abuse Prevention and Treatment Fund 8793, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $218,330 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Thirteenth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to Department of Arts, Culture and History, Educational Broadcasting Authority Fund 8721, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0439, by supplementing, amending, and adding a new item of appropriation of federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $710,176 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Fourteenth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to Department of Arts, Culture and History, Library Commission Fund 8720, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0433, by supplementing, amending, and adding a new item appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $2,388,880 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Fifteenth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to Department of Veterans Assistance, Department of Veteran Assistance Fund 8858, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0613, by supplementing, amending, and adding a new item of appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $1,816,040, the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Sixteenth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to Department of Veterans Assistance Veterans Home Fund 8728, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0618, by supplementing, amending, and adding a new item of appropriation, federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $1,508,024 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Seventeenth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to Department of Arts, Culture and History, Commission for National and Community Services, from Fund 8841, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0432, by supplementing, amending, and adding a new item of appropriation, federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 890101, in the amount of $1,960,588 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Eighteenth, to supplement and amend the appropriation of public monies out of the treasury for the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriated balance in the state fund general revenue, to Department of Arts, Culture and History Division of Culture and History Fund 0293, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0432, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for current expenses, appropriation 13000, in the amount of $22,900, and adding an appropriation for the West Virginia Women Suffrages Memorial Appropriation XXXX in the amount of $50,000, the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Nineteenth, to supplement and amend the appropriation of public monies out of the treasury for the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriated balance in state fund general revenue, Department of Economic Development, Department of Economic Development, Office of the Secretary, Fund 0256, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0307, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for global economic development partnerships appropriation XXXX in the amount of $150,000 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Twelve, to make supplementary appropriation by adding a new item appropriation, increasing expenditure of public monies out of the treasury for the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriated balance in the state fund general revenue, to Department of Education, State Board of Education, State Department of Education Fund 0313, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0402, for directed transfer appropriation 70000, in the amount of $250,000, by supplementing and amending Chapter 11 Acts of Legislative Regular Session 2021, known as the Budget Bill for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Twenty-first, to supplement and amend the appropriation of public monies out of the treasury for the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriated surplus balance in the state fund general revenue, to the Executive Governor's Office Civil Contingent Fund, Fund 0105, Fund fiscal year 2022, Organization 0100, by supplementing and amending the appropriations for civil contingent funds surplus are appropriation 23800, in the amount of $2 million, the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Twenty-second, to make supplementary appropriation by adding a new item of appropriation, increasing the expenditure of public monies out of the treasury for the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriated balance in the state fund general revenue, to Department Administration, Division of Personnel, Fund 0206, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0222, for directed transfer appropriation 70000, in the amount of $500,000, by supplementing and amending Chapter 11 Acts of the Legislative Regular Session 2021, known as the Budget Bill for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Twenty-third, to make supplementary appropriation by adding a new item of appropriation, increasing the expenditure of public monies out of the treasury for the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriated balance in the state fund general revenue, to Department Transportation, Public Port Authority, Fund 0581, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0806, directed transfer appropriation 70000, in the amount of $30,000, by supplementing and amending Chapter 11 Acts of the Legislative Regular Session 2021, known as the Budget Bill for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Twenty-fourth, to make supplementary appropriation of public monies out of the treasury for the balance of monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to Department Transportation, Office of Administrative Hearings, Fund 9027, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0808, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for personal services, appropriation 00100, in the amount of $200,000, and the appropriation for current expenses, appropriation 13000, in the amount of $50,000 for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Twenty-fifth, to make a supplementary appropriation of public monies out of the treasury for the balance of monies unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, to the Department Transportation, Public Port Authority, Special Railroad and Intermodal Enhancement Fund, Fund 8254, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0806, for the appropriation of current expenses, appropriation 13000, in the amount of $30,000, by supplementing and amending Chapter 11 Acts of Legislative Regular Session 2021, known as the Budget Bill for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Twenty-six, to supplement and amend Chapter 11 Acts of Legislative Regular Session 2021, known as the Budget Bill, by supplementing and amending appropriations in Title II, Section 12, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, by transferring $2,500,000 from directed transfer, Fund 1509 appropriation 7000, to the Department of Health and Human Resources Division, Human Services Medical Services Trust Fund, Fund 5185. Twenty-seventh, to amend and reenact 6174 of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, relating to clarifying the manner in which an application fee is to be paid for a West Virginia resident to obtain a state license to carry a concealed deadly weapon, to require half the application fee collected be deposited into the state treasury and credited to the account of the state police, and to exclude honorably discharged resident veterans of the Reserve and National Guard from payment of the application fee. Twenty-eighth, to amend and reenact 1648-3, 1648-4, and 1648-6 of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, all relating generally to the West Virginia ABLE Act, to define terms to authorize state treasurer to promulgate emergency rules to bring a person with signature authority, according to federal law, to open and manage an account on behalf of a designated beneficiary, and to clarify that the straight treasurer may require an application to open an ABLE account. Twenty-ninth, to amend and reenact 1159 of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, relating to taxation of the sale of certain aircraft, to exempt from consumer sales and service tax the sale of aircraft sold in this state and registered in another state and removed from this state within 60 days, to provide for an effective date and to provide conditions of exemption. Thirty, to repeal 2932-3 and 2932-4 of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, to amend and reenact 2932-1, 2932-2, 2932-5 of said code, all relating to establishing a Medal of Valor for emergency medical service personnel, firefighters, and law enforcement officers, to establish the Medal of Valor and criteria for awarding it, to establish the First Responders Honor Board within the Department of Homeland Security, to define persons whom the board may recommend to receive the Medal of Valor, to establish criteria for board membership, to set the term of board membership, to require the board to meet at least annually and provide notice thereof, to provide for the election of a board chair and define a quorum, and to mandate nominations for the Medal of Valor be submitted by the first day of the next session of the legislature. Thirty-fourth, to amend and reenact 16211 and 16213 of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, all relating to the role of local county commissions appointing entities or county boards of education as to rules of local health boards, to provide by amending Section 16211b 3d, that any rule adopted or established by local health board or local health officer on which no action is taken by a county commission or appointing entity to approve, disapprove, or amend the rule within 30 days after the rule is effective, is void, and to provide that with respect to a local rule which solely applies to and affects public, private, or parochial schools or state regulated childcare centers, such local rules shall be approved, disapproved, or amended by the county board of education instead of the county commission or appointing entity, within 30 days of approval of the local rule from the local board of health, to provide by amending Section 16211b 3h, that if there is an imminent public health emergency, approval by the county commission appointing entity or county board of education is not necessary before the local rule goes into effect, but that such local rules shall be approved or disapproved by the county commission appointing entity or county board of education within 30 days after the rule is effective, and any local rule on which the county commission appointing authority or county board of education has taken no action within 30 days shall be void. To provide by amending Section 16211b 3, binding thereto a new subparagraph designated I, that for purposes of Section 16211, a rule or rule subject to approval, disapproval, or amendment by a county commission, appointing entity, or county board of education shall mean and include any order or directive issued by local health officer solely under any independent authority of the local health officer or local health board which operates as a rule or a policy affecting multiple people within the jurisdiction subject to rules of the local board of health, including but not limited to, any order made and entered by a local health officer on or after the effective date of the amendments to 16211 during the regular session of the legislature 2021, and any such order or directive issued by local health officer shall be null and void which is not approved by the county commission, appointing entity, or county board of education, as applicable within 30 days following the effective date of reenactment of 16211 during the third extraordinary session of the legislature in 2021. And to provide by amending 16213, by adding thereto a new subsection designated C, that any order or directive issued by local health officer solely under an independent authority of the local health officer or local health board which operates as a rule or policy affecting multiple people within the jurisdiction subject to the rules of local board of health, including but not limited to, any such order made and entered by a local health officer on or after the effective date of the amendments to 16211 of the West Virginia Code during the regular session of the legislature 2021, shall be subject to approval, disapproval, or amendment by a county commission, appointing entity, or county board of education pursuant to 16211 of this code, within 30 days following the effective date of the reenactment of this section in the third extraordinary session of the legislature in 2021. Thirty-second, to amend and reenact 672a of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, relating to the statutory salary of the Director of the West Virginia Lottery Commission. Thirty-third, to amend the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, binding thereto a new section designated 51123 relating to creating a special revenue fund, designated the Court Facilities Maintenance Fund, to be administered by the West Virginia Supreme Court of Appeals. The fund to consist of monies received from rent or other payments from tenants leasing space owned by the Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia. The fund to consist of monies received from rent or other payments from tenants leasing space owned by the Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia. All monies deposited into the state treasury and credited to the Court Facilities Maintenance Fund to be used to offset the cost to maintain property owned by the Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia, and all monies collected by administrative of the Supreme Court of Appeals from rent or other payments from tenants leasing space owned by the Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia to be deposited into the Court Facilities Maintenance Fund. Expenditures from the fund to be used to offset the cost to maintain property owned by the Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia, and such expenditures not to be authorized from collections but to be made only in accordance with appropriations by the legislature in accordance with Article III, Chapter 12 of the West Virginia Code, and upon fulfillment of the requirements of Article II, Chapter 11B of the West Virginia Code. Forty-fourth, thirty-fourth, to amend and reenact 23512A of the Code of West Virginia 1931 as amended, to amend and reenact 512824 of said code, to amend and reenact 51113, 51114, and 51116, and 51118 of said code, and to amend and reenact 5851 of said code, all relating to updating provision establishing an intermediate court of appeals to correct a citation respecting the right to seek review by the Supreme Court of Appeals of a final decision of the intermediate court of appeals with respect to workers' compensation claims. To provide that appeals of judgments or final orders entered by family courts in domestic violence proceedings must first be made to circuit court, to provide for circuit court jurisdiction over appeals of judgments or final orders entered by family courts in domestic violence proceedings, to remove language establishing an intermediate court of appeals as a court of record, to modify the prohibition on sitting intermediate court of appeal judges retaining their seat upon becoming a candidate or pre-candidate for any elected public office, to prohibit sitting intermediate court of appeal judges only from retaining their seat upon becoming a candidate or pre-candidate for any non-judicial elected public office, to authorize the intermediate court of appeals to be located in a fixed or virtual location in facilities provided by the administrative director of the Supreme Court, to provide an exception to appellate jurisdiction of the intermediate court of appeals with respective final judgments or final orders issued by family courts in domestic violence proceedings, to exclude from the appellate jurisdiction of the intermediate court of appeals all appeals of judgments or final orders issued by family courts in domestic violence proceedings, to authorize individuals appointed to serve as judges of the intermediate court of appeals to take the oath and commence duties on or before July 1, 2022, to authorize contractual arrangements for use of facilities by the intermediate court of appeals to include physical or virtual spaces, and to correct a citation respecting the right to seek review by the Supreme Court of Appeals of a final decision of the intermediate courts of appeals, and to make other technical corrections. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused a great seal of the state of West Virginia to be affixed, done at the Capitol in the city of Charleston, state of West Virginia, this eighth day of October in the year of our Lord, 2021, and in the 159th year of the state. Jim Justice, Governor.
Proclamation will be received. Further message from the executive, message to the Senate, resolutions, petitions, motions, bills introduced.
House Bill 303, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Bureau of Senior Services.
Lady of the 49th.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I ask unanimous consent that the further reading of bills introduced be dispensed with and that each one be considered as formerly introduced and referred to the appropriate committees as indicated on the delegate console system.
Lady of the 49th asks unanimous consent that the further reading of bills introduced be dispensed with and that each bill be considered as having been formally introduced and referred to the appropriate committees as shown on the delegate console system. Are there objections? No objections are heard. Bills will be so referred. Lady of the 49th.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Subject to announcements, I move that the House stand in recess until 6:00 P.M.
Are there announcements, lady of the 49th?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee on Redistricting will meet at 12:00 today in the House Chamber.
Jim the 10th, I got Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee on Finance will meet tomorrow morning at 9:00 A.M. in the House Committee Finance Room. The agenda will be posted also today at 2:00 P.M. Republican members of the Finance will meet in the committee room for a caucus.
Lady of the 41st, I got Tully.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The West Virginia Junior College Mobile Nursing Lab will be in the North Circle of the Capitol until 2:00 P.M. This is a hybrid program that West Virginia Junior College is doing. Eighteen months are in program for caterers to non-traditional students in the rural areas, so if you guys get a chance, please go out and check out the mobile nursing lab. Thank you.
Jim the 40th, I got Jeffries.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee on Health and Human Resources will meet in the House Chamber at 3:00 P.M.
Jim the 17th, I got Warbach.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Committee on the Legislative Oversight Committee of DHHR, otherwise known as LACRA, there's a minor change. We're going to still meet in Senate Finance, but instead of 3:00 P.M., it's 4:00 P.M., so those that are on that, that has to be moved back to 4:00 P.M. Thank you.
Jim the 15th, I got Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your House Government Organization Committee will meet in the House Government Organization Committee Room at 10:00 A.M., 10:00 A.M. tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Jim the 13th, I got Higginbotham.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Your Legislative Oversight Commission on Education Accountability will meet in Senate Finance from 1:00 to 3:00 P.M. today.
Jim the 35th, I got Capto.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. The Committee on the Judiciary will meet today at 2:00 o'clock in the committee room. The agenda for that meeting will be posted. Members of the majority party will caucus in the office up there at 10:00, so 1:50 for the Republican members.
Jim the 56th, I got Hal.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Request availability of the chamber October 13th at 8:00 A.M.
Chamber is available.
In that case, I would like to announce the Select Committee on Redistricting will hold a public hearing Wednesday, October 13th, 2021, at 8:00 A.M. in the House Chamber to discuss redistricting bills, or hearing on redistricting bills.
Lady of the 57th, I got Rowan.
The on children and families will be moved till 5:00 this afternoon, and it'll be meeting in the Senate Judiciary.
Jim the 40th, I got Jeffries.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Republican members of the Health and Human Resources Committee will caucus in the Office of Health and Human Resources at 2:45.
Jim the 15th, I got Foster.
Thank you. It's come to my attention that the Government Organization Committee Room sound system is not working correctly, so instead of, we'll still meet at 10:00 A.M., but it'll be in the chamber tomorrow morning rather than in the Government Organization Committee. Thank you.
Jim the 37th, I got Pushkin.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have two announcements. First, if you happen to be in the Lower Rotunda and are checking out the art exhibit from communities and schools, I just noticed on the way in that at least two of the pieces were done by my much more talented, older brother, David, so go check out all the artwork, but pay close attention to the one that says Pushkin on it, not me, my brother. Also, join us today in the West Gallery. I have a very special constituent. Ms. Ann Berry is here joining us, and she just also happens to have extremely good taste and dates our photographer Perry. Ann, let's make her feel welcome.
Jim the 8th, I got Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I wish to announce the meeting of the House Energy and Manufacturing Committee will take place tomorrow morning at 9:00 A.M. in the House Judiciary Committee Room. We've had to move because Finance will be in the chamber. Thank you.
Jim the 56th, I got Hal.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm neglected to say those wishing to speak at the public hearing on the redistricting bills will have to sign up one hour before the public hearing here in the chamber at the podium.
Are there further announcements? If not, the question before the House is the motion that the House stand in recess until 6:00 o'clock. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. We are in recess until 6:00 o'clock.
Technical correct.
Senator, come to order. All those not having privileges at the floor will please vacate the chamber. Those in the gallery and those on the floor will please rise as we lead in prayer by the Senator from Mason. Please remain standing after the prayer as the Senator from Cabell leads us in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Senator from Mason.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dear Heavenly Father, I'm praying for you to shine your light over our thoughts today. I know that you are the source of light. Please lighten our paths so that we may tread rightly. We don't want to get sidetracked by our duties and responsibilities, Lord. Shine your light over our thoughts and our decisions so that we can be the leaders that you have planned for all of us to be. Give us clear vision on where to go and how to get there, Lord. We would trust you for generous wisdom, straight paths, and peaceful hearts, all for your glory. It's in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Senator. Senator from Cabell.
Please join me with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever and ever.
Clerk has a communication.
I have a letter addressed to the Honorable Senate President Craig Blair. Dear President Blair, it is with the utmost respect that I submit my resignation from the West Virginia Senate effective September 11th, 2021. During my tenure as Senator, my call has always been to serve and represent the people of the 16th Senatorial District faithfully, to the best of my abilities. Over the years, my life has been shaped by the relationships developed while serving in the capacity as a Senator. I have been and continue to be incredibly blessed to know and work with such strong and resilient people who are invested in their families, communities, and state. With the present conditions our state is facing, I feel called to focus all my attention, energies, and abilities in supporting the people by addressing the human condition caused by trauma, depression, fear, and addiction that is becoming more prevalent each day in our families and throughout our communities. Therefore, to do this, I will transition from the legislative branch to the judicial branch to serve the people as a magistrate, as well as continue to serve and ministry as a pastor and priest. Sincerely, John R. Unger the Second.
Communication will be received. Clerk has a communication from the executive.
I have a letter dated September 29th, 2021, addressed to the Honorable Mac Warner, Secretary of State. Dear Secretary Warner, pursuant to West Virginia Code 310-5, I have this day appointed the Honorable Hannah Goffert, Martinsburg, Berkeley County, as a Senator representing the 16th Senatorial District to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of the Honorable John R. Unger from this day through the remainder of the unexpired term of said office. Sincerely, Jim Justice, Governor.
Communication will be received. Clerk has another communication.
I have a letter dated October 5th, 2021, addressed to the Honorable Senate President Craig Blair. Dear Senator Blair, I hereby provide you with notice of my resignation from the West Virginia State Senate effective immediately. It has been a privilege serving the people of the 1st Senatorial District and advocating for their interests in Charleston. I am fortunate that the position of United States Attorney will permit me to continue to serve, leading federal efforts to enhance public safety while delivering justice for West Virginians. Although my time in the legislature has come to an end, the friendships I have made will continue. Best wishes to you, and I hope that our paths cross again someday. Sincerely, William J. Elenfeld the Second.
Communication will be received. Clerk has another communication from the executive.
I have a letter dated October 7th, 2021, addressed to the Honorable Mac Warner, Secretary of State. Dear Secretary Warner, pursuant to West Virginia Code 310-5, I have this day appointed the Honorable Owens Brown, Wheeling, Ohio County, as a Senator representing the 1st Senatorial District to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of the Honorable Bill Elenfeld from this day through the remainder of the unexpired term of said office. Sincerely, Jim Justice, Governor.
Communication will be received. The Chair would announce that both new members previously qualified. Clerk will now ascertain a roll call for the presence of a quorum.
Senator Azinger, Senator Baldwin, Senator Beach, Senator Bowley, Senator Brown, Senator Caputo, Senator Clements, Senator Goffert, Senator Grady, Senator Hamilton, Senator Jeffries, Senator Carnes, Senator Lindsey, Senator Maroney, Senator Maroney, Senator Martin, Senator Maynard, Senator Nelson, Senator Nelson, Senator Phillips, Senator Plimal, Senator Roberts, Senator Romano, Senator Rucker, Senator Smith, Senator Stallings, Senator Stover, Senator Swope, Senator Seipolt, Senator Tacubo, Senator Tar, Senator Trump, Senator Weld, Senator Wolfle, Senator Woodrum, Senator Blair, Mr. President.
Present. Thirty-two members having answered to their names, I declare a quorum present. Clerk has a proclamation from the executive.
I, Jim Justice, by virtue of the authority vested in the governor by Section 7, Article 7 of the Constitution of West Virginia, do hereby call the West Virginia Legislature to convene an extraordinary session at 11:00 A.M. on Monday, October 11th, 2021, in its chambers in the state Capitol, the city of Charleston, for the limited purpose of considering enacting upon the following matters. First, legislation relating to and implementing the decennial redistricting of the House of Delegates and State Senate of the Legislative Department. Second, legislation relating to and implementing the decennial apportionment of Representatives of the United States House of Representatives. Third, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022 to the Bureau of Senior Services Fund 8724, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0508. By supplementing, amending, and adding a new item of appropriation, federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101 in the amount of $16,400,000 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Fourth, to make supplementary appropriation of the federal funds out of the treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022 to the Department of Health and Human Resources Division of Human Services Energy Assistance Fund 8755, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0511. By supplementing and amending the appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101 in the amount of $7,832,540 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Fifth, to expire funds to the unappropriated surplus balance in the state fund general revenue for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, in the amount of $2 million from the Attorney General Consumer Protection Recovery Fund, Fund 1509, fiscal year 2022, Organization 1500. By supplementing and amending the appropriations for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Sixth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022 to the Department of Agriculture Fund 8736, fiscal year 2022, Organization 1400. By supplementing, amending, and adding a new item of appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101 in the amount of $1,098,839 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Seventh, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, the Department of Arts, Culture and History Division of Culture and History Fund 8718, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0432. By supplementing, amending, and adding a new item of appropriation for the federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101 in the amount of $765,400 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Eighth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, the Department of Health and Human Resources Division of Health Community Mental Health Services Fund 8794, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506. By supplementing and amending the appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101 in the amount of $267,969 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Ninth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, the Department of Health and Human Resources Consolidated Medical Service Fund 8723, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506. By supplementing and amending the appropriation for personal services and employee benefits appropriation 00100 in the amount of $100,000 in the appropriation of current expenses appropriation $13,000 in the amount of $11 million for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Tenth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, to the Department of Health and Human Resources Division of Health Fund 8802, fiscal year 8802, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for personal services and employee benefits, appropriation 00100, in the amount of $1.4 million. The appropriation for current expenses, appropriation $13,000, in the amount of $33,556,737 and the appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $14,998,450 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Eleventh, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the Treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, to the Department of Health and Human Resources, Division of Human Services, Fund 8722, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0511, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for medical services, appropriation 18900, in the amount of $83,509,920, and for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $340,984,855 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Twelfth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the Treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, to the Department of Health and Human Resources, Division of Health, Substance Abuse Prevention and Treatment Fund 8793, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0506, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $218,330 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Thirteenth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the Treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, to the Department of Arts, Culture, and History Educational Broadcasting Authority Fund 8721, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0439, by supplementing, amending, and adding a new item of appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $710,176 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Fourteenth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the Treasury for the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, the Department of Arts, Culture, and History Library Commission Fund 8720, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0433, by supplementing, amending, and adding a new item of appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $2.3 million for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Fifteenth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the Treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, the Department of Veterans Assistance, Department of Veterans Assistance Fund 8858, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0613, by supplementing, amending, and adding a new item of appropriation for federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $1.8 million, the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Sixteenth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the Treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, to the Department of Veterans Assistance Veterans Home Fund 8728, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0618, by supplementing, amending, and adding a new item of appropriation, federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $1.5 million for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Seventeenth, to make supplementary appropriation of federal funds out of the Treasury from the balance of federal monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, to the Department of Arts, Culture, and History Commission for National and Community Service Fund 8841, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0432, by supplementing, amending, and adding a new item of appropriation, federal coronavirus pandemic appropriation 89101, in the amount of $1.9 million for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Eighteenth, to supplement and amend the appropriations of public monies out of the Treasury from the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriated balance in the State Fund General Revenue to the Department of Arts, Culture, and History, Division of Culture and History Fund 0293, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0432, by supplementing and amending the appropriations for current expenses, appropriation $13,000, in the amount of $22,900 and adding an appropriation for the West Virginia Women's Suffrage Memorial appropriation in the amount of $50,000, the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Nineteenth, to supplement and amend the appropriation of public monies out of the Treasury from the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriated balance in the State Fund General Revenue to the Department of Economic Development, Department of Economic Development Office of the Secretary, Fund 0256, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0307, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for Global Economic Development Partnerships, appropriation in the amount of $150,000 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Twentieth, to make supplementary appropriation by adding a new item of appropriation and increasing the expenditure of public monies out of the Treasury from the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriated balance in the State Fund General Revenue to the Department of Education, State Board of Education, State Department of Education Fund 0313, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0402, for direct transfer appropriation $70,000, in the amount of $250,000, by supplementing and amending Chapter 11, Acts of the Legislature, Regular Session 2021, known as the Budget Bill for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Twenty-first, to supplement and amend the appropriations of public monies out of the Treasury from the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriated surplus balance in the State Fund General Revenue to the Executive Governor's Office Civil Contingent Fund, Fund 0105, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0100, by supplementing and amending the appropriations for Civil Contingent Fund surplus, appropriation 23800, in the amount of $2 million, the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Twenty-second, to make supplementary appropriation by adding a new item of appropriation and increasing the expenditure of public monies out of the Treasury from the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriated balance in the State Fund General Revenue to the Department of Administration, Division of Personnel Fund 0206, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0222, for direct transfer appropriation $70,000, in the amount of $500,000, by supplementing and amending Chapter 11, Acts of the Legislature, Regular Session 2021, known as the Budget Bill for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Twenty-third, to make supplementary appropriation by adding a new item of appropriation and increasing the expenditure of public monies out of the Treasury from the balance of monies remaining as an unappropriated balance in the State Fund General Revenue to the Department of Transportation, Public Port Authority Fund 0581, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0806, direct transfer appropriation $70,000, in the amount of $30,000, by supplementing and amending Chapter 11, Acts of the Legislature, Regular Session 2021, known as the Budget Bill for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Twenty-fourth, to make supplementary appropriation of public monies out of the Treasury from the balance of monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, the Department of Transportation Office of Administrative Hearings Fund 9027, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0808, by supplementing and amending the appropriation for personal services, appropriation 00100, in the amount of $200,000, and the appropriation for current expenses, appropriation $13,000, in the amount of $50,000 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Twenty-fifth, to make supplementary appropriation out of, of public monies out of the Treasury from the balance of monies remaining unappropriated for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, to the Department of Transportation, Public Port Authority, Special Road and Intermodal Enhancement Fund, Fund 8254, fiscal year 2022, Organization 0806, for the appropriation of current expenses, appropriation $13,000, in the amount of $30,000, by supplementing and amending Chapter 11, Acts of the Legislature, Regular Session 2021, known as the Budget Bill for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Twenty-sixth, to supplement and amend Chapter 11, Acts of the Legislature, Regular Session 2021, known as the Budget Bill, by supplementing and amending appropriations in Title II, Section 12, for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, by transferring $2.5 million from the Direct Transfer Fund 1509, appropriation $7,000, to the Department of Health and Human Resources, Division of Human Services, Medical Services Trust Fund, Fund 5185. Twenty-seventh, to amend and reenact 6174 of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, relating to clarifying the manner which an application fee is to be paid for a West Virginia resident to obtain a state license to carry a concealed deadly weapon, to require half of the application fee collected by deposited into the state treasury and credited to the account of the state police, and to exclude honorably discharged resident veterans of the Reserve and National Guard from payment of the application fee. Twenty-eighth, to amend and reenact 1648-3, 1648-4, and 1648-6 of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, all relating generally to the West Virginia ABLE Act, to define terms to authorize the state treasurer to promulgate emergency rules to permit a person with signature authority according to federal law to open and manage an account on behalf of a designated beneficiary, and to clarify that state treasurer may require an application to open an ABLE account. Twenty-ninth, to amend and reenact 1115-9 of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, relating to taxation of the sale of certain aircraft, to exempt from consumer sales and service tax the sale of aircraft sold in this state and registered in another state and removed from this state within 60 days, to provide for an effective date and to provide conditions of exemption. Thirtieth, to repeal 2932-3 and 2932-4 of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, and to amend and reenact 2932-1, 2932-2, 2932-5 of said code, all relating to establishing a Medal of Valor for emergency medical service personnel, firefighters, and law enforcement officers, to establish the Medal of Valor and criteria for awarding it, to establish the First Responders Honor Board within the Department of Homeland Security, to define persons whom the board may recommend to receive the Medal of Valor, to establish criteria for board membership, to set the term of board membership, to require the board to meet at least annually and provide notice thereof, to provide for the election of a board chair and define quorum, and to mandate nominations for the Medal of, Medal of Valor to be submitted by the first day of the next regular session of the legislature. Thirty-first, to amend and reenact 16211 and 16213 of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, all relating to the role in local county commissions, appointing entities or county boards of educations as to rules of local boards of health, to provide, by amending 16211B3D, that any rule adopted or established by a local health board or local health officer on which no action is taken by a county commission or appointing entity to approve, disapprove, or amend the local rule within 30 days after the rule is effective, is void, and to provide that with respect to a local rule which solely applies to and affects public, private, and parochial schools or state-regulated childcare centers, such local rule shall be approved, disapproved, or amended by the county board of education instead of the county commission or appointing entity within 30 days of approval of the local rule from the local board of health, to provide by amending 16211B3H, that if there is an imminent public health emergency, approval of the county commission, appointing entity or county board of education is not necessary before the local rule goes into effect, but that such local rule shall be approved or disapproved by the county commission appointing entity or county board of education within 30 days after the rule is effective, and any local rule on which county commission appointing authority or county board of education has taken no action within 30 days shall be void, to provide by amending 16211B3, by adding there to a new sub-paragraph designated I for the purposes of 16211, a rule or rule subject to approval, disapproval, or amendment by a county commission appointing entity or county board of education shall mean and include any order or directive issued by a local health officer solely under any independent authority of the local health officer or local health board which operates as a rule or policy affecting multiple people within the jurisdiction subject to the rules of the local board of health, including but not limited to any order made or entered by a local health officer on or after the effective date of the amendment, 16211, during the regular session of the legislature, 2021, and any such order or directive issued by a local health officer shall be null and void which is not approved by the county commission appointing entity or county board of education as applicable within 30 days following the effective date of the reenactment of 16211 during the third extraordinary session of the legislature in 2021, and to provide by amending 16213, by adding there to a new subsection designated C, that any order or directive issued by a local health officer solely under any independent authority of the local health officer or local health board which operates as a rule or a policy affecting multiple people within the jurisdiction subject to the rules of the local health board, board of health, including but not limited to any such order made and entered by a local health officer on or after the effective date of the amendments to 16211 of the West Virginia Code during the regular session of the legislature, 2021, shall be subject to approval, disapproval, or amendment by county commission appointing entity or county board of education pursuant to 16211 of this code within 30 days following the effective date of the reenactment of this section in the third extraordinary session of the legislature in 2021. Thirty-second, to add and reenact 672A of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, relating to the statutory salary of the Director of the West Virginia Lottery Commission. Thirty-third, to amend the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, by adding there to a new section designated 51123, relating to creating a special revenue fund designated the Court Facilities Maintenance Fund to be administered by the West Virginia Supreme Court of Appeals. The fund to consist of monies received from rent or other payments from tenants leasing space owned by the Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia, all monies deposited into the state treasury and credited to the Court Facilities Maintenance Fund to be used to offset the cost to maintain property owned by the Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia, and all monies collected by the administrator of the Supreme Court of Appeals from rent or other payments from tenants leasing space owned by the Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia to be deposited into the Court Facilities Maintenance Fund. Expenditures from the fund to be used to offset the cost to maintain property owned by the Supreme Court of Appeals of West Virginia and such expenditures not to be authorized from collections to be made only in accordance with the appropriation by legislature in accordance with Article III, Chapter 12 of the West Virginia Code, and upon fulfillment of the requirements of Article II, Chapter 11B of the West Virginia Code. Thirty-fourth, to amend and reenact 23512A of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, to amend and reenact 512A24 of said code, to amend and reenact 51113, 51114, 51116, and 51118 of said code, to amend and reenact 5851 of said code, all relating to updating provisions establishing the Intermediate Court of Appeals, to correct a citation respecting the right to seek review by the Supreme Court of Appeals to a final decision of the Intermediate Court of Appeals with respect to workers' compensation claims, to provide that appeals of judgments or final orders entered by family courts and domestic violence proceedings must first be made to circuit court, to provide for circuit court jurisdiction over appeals of judgments or final orders entered by family courts and domestic violence proceedings, to remove language establishing the Intermediate Court of Appeals as a court of record, to modify the prohibition of sitting intermediate court of appeals judges retaining their seat upon becoming a candidate or pre-candidate for any elected public office, to prohibit sitting intermediate court of appeals judges only from retaining their seat upon becoming a candidate or pre-candidate for any nonjudicial elected public office, to authorize the Intermediate Court of Appeals to be located in a fixed or virtual location and facilities provided by the administrative director of the Supreme Court, to provide an exception to appellate jurisdiction of the Intermediate Court of Appeals with respect to final judgments or orders issued by family courts and domestic violence proceedings, to exclude from the appellate jurisdiction of the Intermediate Court of Appeals all appeals or judgments of final orders issued by family courts and domestic violence proceedings, to authorize individuals appointed to service judges of the Intermediate Court of Appeals to take the oath and commence duties on or before July 1, 2022, to authorize contractual agreements for use of facilities by the Intermediate Court of Appeals to include physical or virtual spaces, and to correct a citation respecting the right to seek review by the Supreme Court of Appeals of a final decision of the Intermediate Court of Appeals, and to make other technical corrections. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the State of West Virginia to be affixed, done at the Capitol in the City of Charleston, State of West Virginia, this eighth day of October in the year of our Lord, 2021, in the 159th year of our state. Signed, James Justice, Governor attested to by Mac Warner, Secretary of State.
Senator will be at ease.
Senator will be at ease. Senator will come back to order. Senator will come back to order. Proclamation will be received, Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. The clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution three oh one by Senator Takubo, raising a committee to inform the House of Delegates, the Senate has assembled an extraordinary session.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Mr. President, our question animates consent that the resolution be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the resolution be placed upon its adoption.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the resolution.
Senate Resolution three oh one, raising a committee to inform the House of Delegates, the Senate has assembled an extraordinary session.
Question is on adoption of the resolution. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the resolution adopted. The chair would appoint the Senator from Jefferson, the Senator from Tucker, and the Senator from Ohio to notify the House of Delegates that the Senate has assembled. Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent to introduce a resolution from the floor.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will report the resolution.
Senate Resolution three oh two by Senator Takubo, raising a committee to wait upon the governor.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the resolution be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the resolution be placed upon its adoption.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the resolution.
Senate Resolution three oh two, raising a committee to wait upon the governor.
Question is on adoption of the resolution. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the resolution adopted. The chair would appoint the Senator from Mercer, the senior senator from the sixth, and the junior senator from the sixteenth to notify the governor that the legislature has been assembled. Introduction of guest. Chair recognizes the delegation from the House. Message will be received. Thank you. Introduction of guest. Communications from the House.
There are none.
Communications from the executive.
There are none.
Reports from standing committees.
There are none.
Reports from select committees.
There are none.
Introduction of bills.
Senate Bill three thousand one by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Bureau of Senior Services.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand one, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Bureau of Senior Services, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced. Senior Senator from the seventeenth. Senator will be at ease.
Senate Bill three thousand two by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to DHS Energy Assistance.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand two, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to DHS Energy Assistance, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand three by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive expiring funds to unappropriated surplus balance from Consumer Protection Recovery Fund.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand three, expiring funds to unappropriated surplus balance from Consumer Protection Recovery Fund, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand four by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Department of Agriculture.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand four, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Department of Agriculture, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand five by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Division of Culture and History.
Excuse me. Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand five, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Division of Culture and History, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand six by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Community Mental Health Services.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand six, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Community Mental Health Services, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand seven by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Consolidated Medical Service Fund.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand seven, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Consolidated Medical Service Fund, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand eight by Senator Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Division of Health and Central Office Fund.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand eight, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Division of Health Central Office Fund, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand nine by Senator Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Division of Human Services.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand nine, ma, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Division of Human Services, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand ten by Senator Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Division of Health Substance Abuse Prevention and Treatment.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand ten, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Division of Health Substance Abuse Prevention and Treatment, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand eleven by Senator Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Educational Broadcasting Authority.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand eleven, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Educational Broadcasting Authority, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand twelve by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Library Commission.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the re, the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand twelve, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Library Commission, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand thirteen by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Department of Veterans Assistance.
Senior Senator from the seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our request the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand thir, three thousand thirteen, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Department of Veterans Assistance, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand fourteen by Senator Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Department of Veterans Assistance Veterans Home.
Senior Senator from the seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand fourteen, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Department of Veterans Assistance Veterans Home, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand fifteen by Senator Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Commission for National and Community Service.
Senior Senator from the seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the re, bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand fifteen, making supplemental appropriation of federal funds to Commission for National and Community Service, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand sixteen by Senator Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation to Division of Culture and History.
Senior Senator from the seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. The clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill three thousand sixteen, making supplemental appropriation to Division of Culture and History, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill three thousand Senate Bill 3017 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation to Department of Economic Development, Office of Secretary.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3017, making supplemental appropriation to Department of Economic Development, Office of Secretary, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3018 by Senator Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation to State Department of Education.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3018, making supplemental appropriation to State Department of Education, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3019 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation to Governor's Office Civil Contingent Fund.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3019, making supplemental appropriation to Governor's Office Civil Contingent Fund, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3020 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation to Division of Personnel.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3020, making supplemental appropriation to Division of Personnel, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3021 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation to Special Railroad and Intermodal Enhancement Fund.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3021, making supplemental appropriation to Special Railroad and Intermodal Enhancement Fund, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3022 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation to DOT Office of Administrative Hearings.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3022, making supplemental appropriation to DOT Office of Administrative Hearings, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3023 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive making supplemental appropriation to DOT Public Port Authority.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
President, our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3023, making supplemental appropriation to DOT Public Port Authority, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3024 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive supplementing and amending Title II, Section 12 Budget Bill for fiscal year ending June 30, 2022.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3024, supplementing and amending Title II, Section 12 Budget Bill for fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3025 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive relating generally to West Virginia Abel Act.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3025, relating generally to West Virginia Abel Act, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3026 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive relating to review, approval, disapproval, or amendment of local boards of health rules by county commission or county board of education.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3026 by Senator Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by, excuse me, Senate Bill 3026 relating to review, approval, disapproval, or amendment of local boards of health rules by county commission or county board of education, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3027 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive establishing Medal of Valor for Emergency Medical Service Personnel, Firefighters, and Law Enforcement Officers.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that Senate Bill 3027 be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3027, establishing Medal of Valor for Emergency Medical Service Personnel, Firefighters, and Law Enforcement Officers, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3028 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive relating to statutory salary of Director of Lottery Commission.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill be made, question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3028, relating to statutory salary of Director of Lottery Commission, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3029 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive creating court facilities and maintenance fund.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill be made, question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3029, creating court facilities maintenance fund, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3030 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive updating provisions establishing intermediate court of appeals.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Mr. President, our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3030, updating provisions establishing intermediate court of appeals, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3031 by Senator Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive exempting sale of certain aircraft from consumer sales and service tax.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the bill be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. Clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3031, exempting sale of certain aircraft from consumer sales and service tax, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced.
Senate Bill 3032 by Senators Blair, Mr. President, and Baldwin by request of the executive relating to application fees for license to carry concealed deadly weapon.
Senior Senator from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that Senate Bill 3032 be taken up for immediate consideration, committee reference be dispensed with, and that the bill be read a first time.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. The clerk will read the bill first time.
Senate Bill 3032, relating to application fees for license to carry concealed deadly weapon, first reading of the bill.
Bill be advanced. Resolutions.
There are none.
Petitions.
I have a petition presented by Senator Caputo from the residents of Mill Fall, their relatives, school bus drivers, postal mail carriers, and service personnel with 99 signatures to fix a culvert bridge at intersection of Big Mill Fall and 4-H Camp Road.
The petition will be referred to the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure. Senior Senator from, senior senator from seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Subject to announcements, I move the Senate stand in recess until 6:00 PM.
Are there announcements? Senior Senator from the sixth. The chair would announce following changes to the membership of standing committees. The junior senator from the sixteenth has been appointed to the Committees on Agriculture and Rural Development, Education, Finance, Health and Human Resources, and Workforce. The senator from Ohio has been appointed to the Committees of Banking and Insurance, Economic Development, Energy, Industry and Mining, Finance, Government Organization, and Interstate Cooperation. Senior Senator from the seventeen. Now go back.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our question animates consent that the updated list of standing committee membership be printed in the journal.
Is there objection? Chair here is none. So ordered. Are there further announcements? Junior Senator from the fifteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your Select Committee on Redistricting will meet today at 3:00 PM in the Judiciary Committee Room in West Wing, 208 West Wing.
Further announcements? Senior Senator from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Depending on when we get off the floor, on your desk is an invitation inviting you this evening at 7:00 to the West Virginia Legislative Prayer Caucus Vision Casting Meeting in the Judiciary Committee Room in 208 West. This caucus was formed by Congressman Randy Forbes, who will be joining us virtually to tell us how this group was formed, the goals of the caucus, and what we can do to help. Food and refreshments will be served. Please join us.
Further announcement of Senator from Brook.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your members of the majority party will be caucusing in room 330 West at 1:00 PM. Thank you.
Senator from Brook.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a follow-up to my announcement previously, there are some afternoon interim committee meetings. The House will be running those, so if something conflicts with the Senate calendar, those meetings will go on. You can attend them if you're able to as a member. If not, attend to your Senate business. Also, there have been changes made to the interim schedule for the rest of the day and potentially into tomorrow, so I would advise everybody to take a look at the updated agenda as that is online and ensure that their meetings are still on or if they've been changed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Are there further announcements? If not, the Senate will stand in recess until, if not the question before the Senate is, the Senate stand in recess till 6:00 PM. All those in favor will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. I declare the Senate in recess.